Good evening. I will call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for the date, July 22, 2024. Ms. Rush, if you'll do the roll call. Here.
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 I will entertain a motion to excuse Council members Marriott and Pfeiffer from this evening's agenda. Council member Frey.
I move to excuse Council member Pfeiffer and Council member Marriott.
All right. Council member Ambrose, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. That passes five to zero. Council member Marriott and Council member Pfeiffer are excused absences. Thank you all. So we have two workshops on this evening's agenda. The first is going to be land use and housing legislation update, and I believe our senior assistant city attorney, Ms. Emily Grog, will be covering that for us.
Actually, Mayor, this is Jessica. I'm going to be covering just the first couple of slides, and then Emily's going to be jumping in to give us our legal interpretation.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Garner. Please take it away.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. We're pleased to be here tonight. We have a few slides to go over regarding all of the land use legislation that has been going on for the past, or sorry, just wrapped up in May, but took a few months during the legislative session. So I just wanted to, next slide, just talk about the purpose of our discussion today. So again, we're just going to talk about is very high-level overview of the approved bills. We're going to talk about the important dates and deadlines that staff has for compliance in order to meet the requirements of the state legislation. And just a note that we will be bringing back all code-related items back to the city council for review and approval. We will try to get back in front of you for another workshop, most likely before we get to House Bill 1313 and that transit-oriented communities bill. But a couple of these, we're going to try to get taken care of a little bit sooner. I just want to note, all of this is a public process, and will all be noticed accordingly. And then lastly, tonight, we're just going to talk very briefly about the Housing Strategic Plan and how it's going to be aligning with the Land Development Code. Next slide, please. So we have a number of different bills to briefly go over tonight. So we're going to talk about residential occupancy limits. That's House Bill 24-1007. Then Rob is going to jump in and start talking about minimum parking requirements. And then he's going to go over accessory dwelling units in transit-oriented communities. And then we'll talk about Senate Bill 174, which is the Affordable Housing Plan. And then Carrie is going to jump in and talk a little bit about Prop 123 and also the Land Development Code alignment. Before we jump in, I just wanted to take a moment. I can't see anybody from where I'm presenting, but I assume you can see all of the staff that are here tonight. So we do have Emily Grog. She's our senior assistant attorney, senior assistant city attorney. We also have Rob Smetana, who's our planning manager. We have Carrie Espinoza, who's our housing manager, and we have Rosalyn Thompson, who's our new principal planner. Okay, next slide, please. So just briefly, House Bill 24-1007 was a bill that was created to essentially not limit the number of people who can live together in a single dwelling unit based upon familial relationship. Unless there are demonstrated health and safety standards such as fire code or building code issues, we are really limited in being able to prohibit the number of people who could be living in a single-family dwelling unit. This is actually, the date for this has come and passed, so this was effective as of July 1, 2024. Next slide, please. And essentially, what we need to do is get into the Land Development Code and eliminate or slash revise the definition of family as it relates to housing occupancy. And then we also need to take a plug and look at the short-term rental regulations to impose an occupancy limit in the Land Development Code, and that's currently regulated by the definition of family. This may be a good time. Emily, I apologize if you want to jump in here and talk a little bit about, as we jump into minimum parking requirements, but maybe talk about the limits of what we're going to be discussing tonight in terms of potential future litigation. And then if you also want to mention that we will be going in to talk more about short-term regulations and making a couple more tweaks to that, and we will be back to the council to talk more about that in either a dinner or workshop coming up soon.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Garner, Mayor, City Council. Just really quickly, we've kind of gave you a heads-up that tonight, we really are just doing a high-level overview. This legislation is pretty brand-new. As you will see through this presentation, unlike the residential occupancy limits, a lot of our dates are in the coming years. A big date is going to be coming up in September. That's when DOLA will have mapping done, and we'll know more. Right now, we're kind of doing conceptual what we think it's going to look like for the city of Arvada. At this time, we are just giving information. We are not discussing any of the legal implications or any concerns about preemption. That will be addressed by the city attorney's office at a different time. Any of those concerns, no matter what is decided and how we go forward with those, it doesn't change the fact that we have to move forward with some of our code adoption. If something was to change and courts found that any of these bills were a preemption and that they weren't enforceable, we would then have to just change our code again. So it's not that, we're not going to stop moving forward with these bills. So we just wanted to kind of give you that heads-up that this is really just high-level education. As Ms. Garner said, we're going to come back a lot. We're going to see you guys a lot over the next few months. Not only do we have some pretty low-hanging fruit code adoption that we can get with some of these bills, and then just some, you know, our routine looking at the LDC, things that we've been wanting to bring to you anyways. We're going to probably separate out short-term rentals, and then later, the transit-oriented communities, which has much further dates implementation, will probably come at a later time. So just to give you kind of an idea of what we're looking at, this is going to be not just over the next few months, but actually over the next few years, that we'll be coming back to you with code revisions for the LDC. But it's a living document, so it's not unusual for us to come and constantly be reviewing and looking for improvements. So with that, Ms. Garner, if you have anything further?
No, I don't. Thank you, Emily. So I guess we can move on to our first slide. That's House Bill 24-1304, and Rob is going to take it away and talk about minimum parking requirements.
All right. Thank you, and good to see you all this evening. So minimum parking requirements. These, this is a bill that's really related to, at this point, residential development. And there's a couple of different limitations in terms of residential development that the bill addresses. The first is, within these applicable transit service areas, that we, as a community, cannot require any minimum parking. So it would be all market-driven for multifamily residential projects, adaptive reuse projects for residential or mixed-use or adaptive reuse mixed-use project, projects that might have a minimum of 50% residential. So as Emily mentioned, we're still waiting on some maps from the state, from the Department of Local Affairs, but we think these are the instances in Arvada where we would need to look at this regulation and not require any specific parking requirement. And that would be within a quarter of a mile of the G-line, any G-line station, and then RTD routes 51, 52, and 76. So that's a fairly, still a fairly limited area, but definitely an area that we'll be looking at in terms of not being able to require any parking. The second limitation of the bill is elsewhere within the municipality, we would only be able to require one parking space per residential unit for any housing project with more than 20 units. So that would apply to single-family, duplex, townhomes, and multifamily or mixed-use. And if we do want to require the one parking space, we do have to go through a process. And that would be the city actually having to do a parking study that would find that we have substantial evidence that there would be a negative impact on the pedestrian realm, biker emergency access, or existing on-and-off-street parking within an eighth of a mile of a project boundary. And we would have to have that study completed within 90 days of an application. And again, we would have to do that in-house or hire a consultant to do that. So there is a process involved, and would take some type of staff time to do that. So it's something just as we move forward to think about how we would want to go ahead and implement that particular piece of legislation. Now, this one doesn't go into effect until next summer, so we have a little bit of time. We still need to wait for the maps from DOLA to know exactly where the no-parking minimum would apply. And then we would need to look at how we want to implement the one parking space requirement if we want to go that route. So our thoughts at this point would be, obviously, to remove the residential parking minimums in the situations where we're in an applicable transit area, and then just revise our language in the LDC to reflect the bill's language about requiring the one minimum parking space. And then we can evaluate on a case-by-case basis how, whether we would require the one parking space, and then doing the documentation surrounding that. Any questions on that bill? All right. Next up, accessory dwelling units. So as you all know, we do already allow accessory dwelling units in the community in any single-family zone district. So this bill does not have a significant impact on us. Generally, our regulations already allow them. They basically fit these limitations with a couple of exceptions, and that is, we do currently require one-off-street parking space for any ADU. The bill would prohibit that in some situations, so we would need to go back and look at our code as it relates to that. The only other, well, there are two other effects that this bill would have on us. We do, at this point, require a deed restriction on properties that say, that currently says an owner has to live in either the primary unit or the ADU. We would not be allowed to have those deed restrictions under this legislation. So we would need to amend the code as it relates to that. And then a very minor detail is our rear setbacks don't necessarily conform to this legislation. So we would need to do some revisions there, but that's a fairly easy fix. Really, oh, and we also, we already have an administrative process, so that does not apply to us. As it affects PUDs and homeowners' associations, however, they can no longer prohibit accessory dwelling units. So we do have some communities in the city today that have private restrictions on ADUs, and so those would go away under this legislation. And so we might see some additional areas where we would have ADUs implemented.
Council member Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm, you know, I'm curious about the short-term rental restrictions that you've got here as an exception to the state law. Given that we can no longer have restrictions on or requirements that the, the, can you go back to the slide so I'm going to make sure I say it right? The owner occupancy requirement piece, do you feel like there is some room there for us to look at our short-term rental requirements or restrictions that we have, and maybe tightening that up more to help address, you know, concerns about residents that, you know, I often hear about is with short-term rentals and how those can get really out of control and affect the neighborhood and the community. And so I'm just wondering your thoughts on, you know, how we can no longer have owner occupancy requirements, but maybe there's things we could tighten up around the short-term rental piece?
Sure. And today, we don't have any restrictions on them being used as short-term rentals. So that's certainly something we can look at, because that is an exception that we can apply to ADUs in the future. So if the council wishes to restrict short-term rentals in those ADU situations, we can certainly go down that path of the LDC rewrite.
Thank you. Ms. Garner, do you have something to add?
Thank you, Mayor. If it's, if, sorry, Mayor Protim, we have a number of suggestions that we would like to bring back to the council for consideration regarding short-term rentals. And that also, there's a number of things that we've been investigating, that I think we have some, hopefully, some proposed solutions for some of the challenges we've been dealing with, with a few of our short-term rentals. And so we'll be back to talk about that and also this particular requirement. We'll be coming back to you, I would like to say, sometime either this fall or early next year.
Wonderful. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah. And then there's just a list of a few other exceptions in the legislation. So, you know, an ADU that would be in Old Town can still be required to meet the Old Town historic district guidelines. We can restrict mobile homes and recreational vehicles from being utilized as ADUs, and life safety requirements still apply. And again, that goes into effect next summer as well. Pretty much talked about that. The one thing that we can do as a community, there are some, some ability for private sector grants in the bill as well. So if we meet certain requirements in the bill to be a certified accessory dwelling unit supportive jurisdiction, that does free up some state money for private citizens to enable them to potentially build the ADU, such as there's a grant programs through CHAF, the Colorado Housing Finance Agency, and the Department of Local Affairs that are tied to this. So if we implement some strategies as well as adopting the kind of the full ADU or regulations, private owners would be eligible for those grants. Okay. Kind of the big bill, then, is the Transit-Oriented Communities Bill. So that is going to require communities with rail transit or significant bus transit, BRT, or bus transit that's more frequent than 30-minute headways. We have to accommodate an average of 40 dwelling units per acre within certain boundaries of those stations and stops. So the legislation talks about creating or having to implement a housing opportunity goal, and that's based on the number of acres that are around those transit stations, either within a half a mile of a rail station or a quarter of a mile of a bus station. And once we calculate what that acreage is in those areas, with some exceptions that I'll get to, we take that acreage, multiply it by 40 dwelling units per acre, and the city would have to then make sure we have the zoning capacity for that number of units. Now, that doesn't mean that anybody has to necessarily build to that 40 unit, to the acre density. The city just has to allow for development to average 40 DU's an acre.
Council member Frey.
Thank you. My question, Rob, is how do we adjust for this bill if RTD shuts down bus stations?
I know that's, that's an issue, and that's, yeah, that's, that's part of the discussion that's out there. And we're waiting for some policy implementation from the Department of Local Affairs on this bill as well. And so that's one thing I think has been put out there to DOLA, to say, hey, what does this mean? Is this static, or does this move over time? And I don't know that we've got a great answer to that yet. So we're going to wait for some DOLA guidance on that.
Yeah, I think it would just be concerning to rezone for something so dense, and then RTD leaves, and all these people don't have transit. So thank you.
Council member Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this presentation. Following along with Council member Frey's question, I have noticed that a lot less people are using the G-line because they went from every 15 minutes to every 30 minutes. So if we build to their requirement or zone to their requirement, and then they do something with the G-line, I mean, we, it's concerning to me that we are, we're trying to move ahead with something that's completely unknown with an agency that's not, it's not really tied into either DOLA or with us. So.
True. Yeah. It is dependent on RTD and what their service schedule is, and they change those every six months. So, yeah.
And the same with buses. I mean, we had a great bus that went all the way out to 93 on 64th, and now it stops at Quaker or even before Quaker. So if we were to build along that, and then they just, you know, pull back that service, I think we'd need to have some sort of tie-in and buy-in with RTD.
Yeah. And we're hopeful that DOLA will give us some good guidance on that, but we are still waiting for that. So in calculating the housing opportunity goal, there are some exceptions in the bill that we can exclude some areas, and that will certainly bring down the number around our stations. We've got a lot of floodplain in those areas that would be impacted, a lot of state and locally-owned properties. And the other piece that was thrown in there, I think, kind of towards the end of the bill's development, is having a walk shed. So if you can't get from one side of the tracks to the other very easily, the Sheridan Station is a good example. You know, you get off the train, if you want to get onto the south side of the Sheridan Station, you have to actually walk 60th, the Sheridan, and south, and then over. So once they figure out what that geography looks like with those walk sheds, that will probably reduce our number some beyond what you see here. And we tried to take our best guess effort at what this would mean, but it's by no means final. But we could be looking at, you know, a requirement to zone for an additional 48,000 residential units, which is, would basically, you know, double the size of the housing stock in the city. And again, that's just zoning for it. Doesn't mean all those units will ever get built, but we would have to have the zoning available. And so this map, again, is conceptual. It's not the official DOLA map, but just kind of gives you an idea of the areas that we'd be talking about, where we would calculate the density from. Now, the one thing the bill does allow is, all the density does not have to go into those areas. We can have it through a community conversation, look at moving that density to other areas of the city. And so that's something we'll have to take a look at once we go down that path. But the city would also have to come up with affordability strategies as well as part of this legislation and as part of the housing opportunity goals. And those are kind of listed here. I won't go through the list. It's a long list. The one piece I did miss, I apologize, is that we can also look at our water supply in determining if we have enough water to actually supply the potential, you know, number of units. So that is something that the legislation actually gives us a little bit of an exception as well.
Mr. Smetana, thank you. So in addition to the amount of water and water rights we will have, I understand this bill came with some grant funding for infrastructure, but it'll frankly be probably woefully inaccurate for the amount of infrastructure required around the metro area. Does this bill provide the ability to not move forward with a certain density if we do not have the infrastructure, even if we have the water, if we don't have the infrastructure to account for it?
Sure. Great segue. On to the next slide here. So towards the bottom there, it says the cities can, you know, enforce infrastructure standards, and that could result in the denial of a project. So if a project needs to upsize, stormline in order to be accommodated, yet the developer says, well, we can't afford to do that, that can be a reason to deny the project. So with any of that, unless the developer is willing to upfront the cost of anything along those lines, we can deny a project for those reasons. So kind of going back up a little bit, as part of this, we also have to have an administrative approval process for any project that would be up to, or be less than five acres in size. So right now, in a number of our districts, we do require conditional use approvals, which are a public process. So we'll need to evaluate that and how, what the impact that might be on the LDC and our approval processes. And as for right now, we also think that would apply to call-ups. So this has to be an all administrative process for those projects. But we'll still need to evaluate that based on when we get more information and kind of the go-ahead from DOLA on that. But beyond the ability to deny for infrastructure reasons, we can still charge impact fees. We can approve projects of a lower density than the 40 units per acre or a higher density, either way. As we're trying to determine how we want to zone the city to accommodate the housing opportunity goal, we can move densities around, as I mentioned. So we can have lower densities at, say, the Old Town Station where we don't really want to see, you know, wholesale redevelopment of Old Town. We could shift that to other locations in the city, so that's an opportunity. You can allow commercial uses within those transit areas, so we can have our mixed-use zoning. And we can deny projects based on a traffic study as well. So not only infrastructure, but also traffic impacts. There's the flexibility. Again, we can have mixed-use areas that allow residential. We can have areas that may only have lower densities than that 40 DU's an acre. On the flip side of that, if you go that route, then you also have to have areas that allow a higher density than that. So as long as they average the 40 DU's. Again, density can be moved around. There is a section called optional transit areas that we can transfer density to wherever there are some other bus lines, and that doesn't necessarily need to be 15-minute service or 30-minute service. It just needs to be along a bus route. And again, you can have a variety of different densities. This bill, we have a couple of years in order to kind of implement it. Again, we're waiting on some guidance from DOLA on maps and how we calculate the housing opportunity goal. One of the things we're going to be waiting on is, in our mixed-use districts, we don't actually have densities. We rely just on bulk and plain and height restrictions. So DOLA needs to give us guidance on how we calculate a density when, you know, a district does not have an explicit density within it. If we're going to pursue water insufficiency, we'll need to do that by the end of 2026. And then the full implementation of our housing opportunity goal would be in December of 2027. So we've got a little bit of time, but time flies when you're doing this type of planning. Let's see. There are some grant programs, as the mayor alluded to, as part of this. I don't remember the amount, but it is, it is not a significant amount, given the number of MPOs and the number of municipalities that this will impact. And then just a list of the things we'll need to do as a community. And we're hoping, again, as part of our comprehensive plan update, that seems like a great opportunity to have the conversation about where density should be located as part of this bill. And we've got until the end of 2026 to do that, so we've got some time. Though hopefully, if we get funding for the comprehensive plan this year, we can get into that effort as part of this. All right. Now I'm going to turn it over to Carrie to talk about the next couple of bills.
Thank you, Mr. Smetana. Welcome, Ms. Espinoza.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So the next bill is Senate Bill 24-174, the Sustainable Affordable Housing Assistance. And this bill requires both the state and local governments to create housing needs assessments and a housing action plan. DOLA is required by the end of this year to identify and define baseline standards for local governments to follow in creating their housing needs assessments. And for us, what this means, once those baseline standards are established, is that no later than December of 2026, we will need to conduct and publish a local housing needs assessment every six years. Needs assessments that have been completed after 2022 and before December 31st of this year may qualify. So as you all are very aware, we did complete a housing needs assessment as part of our housing strategic plan. So we are in conversation with DOLA to see if the needs assessment that was part of that strategic plan is, will meet the requirements under this, under this new bill. They haven't defined what those baseline standards are as of yet. That will be coming out in the next few months, so we're just waiting to hear back from them. And if so, we can submit the plan to them, get their approval, and then we won't have to submit another plan for another six years. And if so, we can submit the plan to them, get their approval, and then we won't have to submit another plan for another six years. If we find that we will, that it doesn't meet all the eligibility requirements, then we'll have to complete another one before the end of 2026. Next, the city is also required to complete a housing action plan. And so, starting January 2028 and no less than every six years thereafter, this is a requirement on the city. And this plan is subject to approval by council following a public hearing. Again, the housing action plan completed after January 2022 may qualify. And we just adopted our housing strategic plan. So we are hopeful that the work that we did for the housing strategic plan will count as this housing action plan. So we will be reaching out to DOLA to see if we can use our plan to meet this requirement. So more information coming soon on that. Additionally, this bill relates to the comprehensive plan that we will need to include a water supply element and a strategic growth element. These are policies to prevent sprawl and promote smart growth, vacant and underused site analysis, and for sprawl analysis. This bill, under this bill, state grants will be given to municipalities that have completed a housing needs assessment and a housing action plan. So those areas will be given priority for grants versus others that have not completed the needs assessment. Priority will also be given to municipalities that have a master plan that include a water supply element and a strategic growth element. So I already covered this a bit, but what will the city need to do to comply? So we'll find out if the approved housing needs assessment qualifies, as well as the strategic plan, if that can be counted as the housing action plan. And then we'll also need to update the comprehensive plan to address the new elements. And that must be done by the end of 2026.
I would like to ask a question.
Please go ahead, Councilmember Ambrose.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was wondering, it said, you said that we need to have these in place to qualify for state grants. Do you have, do you know how much these grants typically are?
Well, I think the, you're asking about the amount of the grant, Councilmember Ambrose?
Yeah, I mean, is there like a typical grant fund? Do we have, do we already use this grant fund for housing initiatives? That they're now putting a qualifier on? Are there going to be grant funds to fund creating these plans?
I don't, I don't recall seeing anything. The Division of Local Governments is going to be coming out with more guidance as far as the technical support that they can provide through this bill. So there may be opportunities there to support the completion of these plans. I know that DOLA already has existing programs, and actually, we just used a DOLA grant to complete our recent housing strategy. So I believe that there are funding opportunities there to bring in funding to support these new plans. But I'm assuming that there will be additional guidance beyond that as well.
Great. And then back to the other question I asked about just existing funds, like qualifying for existing funds. Are we using some of those funds? Would it give access to new funds that are being created?
Yeah, so this will, my interpretation of it is that it applies to Proposition 123, any of the existing DOLA grants that are out there and available, the CHAFA funding that's available, that this will all fall under these new requirements.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? So moving on to Proposition 123, so it's hard to believe, but it's been a year since we've opted into Proposition 123. So I wanted to give an update as far as what our efforts are to meet the Proposition 123 commitments. As a reminder, CHAFA receives 60% of the Affordable Housing Financing Fund and has used that funding to create four programs to encourage affordable housing development. And those programs are what you see on the screen here. It's land banking, concessionary debt, tenant equity vehicle, and modular and factory-built finance. I highlighted the land banking opportunity in green because that's really the opportunity that is the best option for the city to apply for directly. We are not, we don't have a development arm, so it doesn't make sense for us to apply for concessionary debt or the tenant equity vehicle programs. The developers themselves can apply for those programs, and we're not eligible to for the modular and factory-built finance. So focusing on the land banking opportunity, it's our understanding that CHAFA is going to announce the next land banking opportunity in the next few days. So we're awaiting for guidance on that. We are, we know that CHAFA is going to prioritize projects over others, projects that have site plans, partnerships already built. Those are the things that CHAFA is looking for, or at least that's what they were looking for last year in these applications. So we're really trying to position ourselves to present our best case when we apply for these funds. So what does that mean? What are we doing in order to do so? Some of the strategies is we're just, we're keeping an eye on what property comes available. Our housing development specialist, Sam Bradley, she's always keeping a pulse on what's coming up in the community. So that's something that we'll continue to do. We are in constant communication with developers on potential Proposition 123 projects. How can we, how can the city go in, acquire the land, and then work with a developer who could then build the units? That's a conversation that we're having frequently with developers, so that when we apply, we already know or have a potential developer who can build it. And if we want services, who could those potential service providers be? We also want to support affordable housing developers with their Proposition 123 efforts, although we might not be the entity going in and applying for those funds. How can we support others with their application? So those are conversations that we're having as well. And we're also focused on the 90-day expedited review process. DOLA recently released guidance on some possible strategies that we could consider in terms of meeting the 90-day expedited review process. We'll be taking a look at those to see what makes the most sense for us.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Espinoza. So if we are expediting these in the review process, will we be holding back or hamstringing other projects that are in the pipeline for review?
Do you want to answer that question?
That will be something we'll need to take a look at, but, you know, this is a requirement, so we will, yeah, we will have to evaluate how that will be implemented, but that could be of concern.
Absolutely. I just wanted to see if we're addressing that impact or that possible impact.
Ms. Espinoza, I have a quick question. With these projects, is it possible to also look at affordable ownership housing units such as Habitat for Humanity? Or does it basically require it to be through CHAFA in the rental?
There is an opportunity through DOLA. DOLA also receives Prop 123 funding. They receive 40% of funds. And they do have a homeownership option that developers can apply for. So yes, there is an opportunity for homeownership through there as well. It's not something that we would apply for directly, but we could support another developer in going after those funds. It is something that Habitat for Humanity is taking a look at for the 52nd and Carr Street project.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mayor Protim Mormon.
Thank you. I just, I'm just curious with, you know, you made the statement about it's been a year since we opted into Prop 123. Are you seeing a greater interest by developers because of Prop 123? They're coming to the City of Aden saying, hey, I want to do this kind of project that we didn't see before.
We do have interest. We do have developers contacting us. It's interesting because we had a number of projects, the Van Street, Ralston Gardens. We had a number of developers coming to us all at once, so there was a lot of activity. That interest is still there, but the, we're, we do see that our pipeline is slowing down a bit. And so we're trying to ramp that back up and get those discussions going again. Developers are always interested. It's that land piece. So the more that we can do there to secure land, that really helps the application. So that's why the land banking is a good fit for us.
Thank you. Please continue.
And in terms of the housing strategic plan and the land development code, we really want to work and make sure that we're consistent, that the strategic plan and the land development code are consistent with one another. As you might recall, in the housing strategic plan, there were two policy levers identified in the strategic plan. The first one being funding. We want to make sure that we can bring in additional funding and utilize our existing funding to support affordable housing development. For purposes of the presentation tonight, we wanted to review the policy lever number two and focus on that. And that policy lever two is to implement land use and zoning modifications to unlock supply, improve natural affordability and housing diversity, and to incentivize affordable projects. So what are we doing to do that? And how can we make sure that both plans are consistent and align with one another? Again, going back to that fast-track process for affordable housing, that is a focus identified in the housing strategic plan, and we want to make sure that the same language is adopted in the land development code for that consistency. We want to look at the definitions in both of the plans to make sure that there is consistency there. We'll take a look at density bonuses, design standards, lot sizes and lot coverages, monitoring current and emerging inclusionary zoning practices, ongoing collaboration with the Housing Advisory Committee, and certainly more to come on that. And that brings us to next steps. So Jessica, did you want to take this?
Sure, I apologize. I couldn't get off mute. So just to kind of wrap up, we, as I said before, we'd like to bring you more information on these topics in upcoming workshops. We know that there are some really time-sensitive dates that we want to be monitoring, and some proposed code changes that we want to bring back to you. So we will bring you information through the workshops. I will be posting information in the council weekly updates. You can expect to see us back probably end of this year, especially when we're talking about some of that, what we call that low-hanging fruit. So the occupancy requirements, we may be getting on some of those a little bit more quickly, ADU requirements. So we'll be back with you as soon as we can. Most likely, you'll be seeing us in the first quarter of 2025. And again, depending on what happens with funding for the comprehensive plan, we'll have more updates with you and also with the community as we continue to have conversations about all of these topics. And then our next slide is just to thank you for your time. We really appreciate the opportunity to provide you with an update. Thank you for your questions, and we will be back very soon. And most likely, Rosalind is going to become a feature that you will see often because she's going to be doing a lot of this code work for us in the coming months. So thank you again for your time.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Gardner. Thank you, Mr. Smetana, Ms. Espinoza, Ms. Grog, and welcome to the team, Ms. Thompson. We're happy to have you here. All right. Next, I will open our next workshop, which is the 2025 Water, Wastewater, and Stormwater Rates and Fees Discussion. And welcome up Ms. Israel, Director of Utilities.
Hi there, Mayor, members of council. It's always a pleasure to get to come and talk with you about the city's water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure. I'm Sharon Israel. I'm the Utilities Director. And joining me this evening is Chris Gray. She's our Utilities Business Manager. So one of the things that we wanted to do tonight was start an earlier discussion with the council than we have in previous years when we talk about water, sewer, and stormwater rates. So as you know, this is something we do every year. It's part of the budget process. And last year, we held off until September to hold a workshop with the council. And we heard then that the council wanted an earlier look at policy decisions, opportunities to ask questions, provide input. So this year, we're doing that. So you might remember that in April, we came and discussed this topic. So one of the things we'll do this evening is circle back and share with you some of the things we heard and some responses. Make sure we're on the right track. And then we also have additional workshops scheduled in August and September to provide some more touchpoints in the rate-setting process ahead of October's budget and rate ordinances. So I'm going to just do an introduction for a couple of slides to kind of refresh everyone's memory on what the enterprise funds are and what we do with the funds. And then I'm going to hand it over to Chris Gray for discussion. So a quick recap on the water fund. So this is one of the city's enterprise funds. Last year, we got about $49 million in revenue. And with that revenue, we provide reliable, high-quality, and plentiful drinking water to the city 24/7/365. Those funds also fund capital projects and operations, including rapid response to system failures like waterline breaks. This water is also used for fire protection by our Vada Fire, and of course, beautiful landscapes around the city. The enterprise fund, that $49 million of revenue, is from rates and fees that we charge our customers, along with system development charges and a few other different types of smaller fees. And as a reminder, we can't mix the funds we receive from the water fund or any enterprise with the general fund. So it sort of stands on its own like its own business. And then we can also, we're allowed to issue debt with council approval on these funds. And we most recently did that for the water fund in the amount of $50 million in December of 2022 to help us with some water treatment projects. So similarly, on the sewer and stormwater funds, those are two distinct enterprise funds as well. The sewer fund in 2023 raised about $20 million in revenue, so less than the $49 million in water. Stormwater had a little over $4 million in revenue, just to give you an idea of those numbers. We, just like the water fund, we use those funds for capital projects and operations, including rapid responses to emergencies such as floods or if there is an issue with the sewer. But we do provide those services 24/7/365 and make sure that our systems are reliable and safe. We like to say that sewage stays where it belongs in the pipes. It's sent to Metro Water Recovery in Denver for treatment. And then we pay, using these same funds from the sewer fund, we pay Metro Water Recovery to treat our wastewater based on flows and then also loadings, which is the concentration of material in the wastewater. And on the stormwater fund, we pay for flood control projects. We partner with Mile High Flood District. We provide environmental water quality services and oversight and make sure that we're reducing pollution from urban runoff as much as possible. So just like the water fund, the enterprise revenue comes from rates and fees and for the sewer fund, system development charges. We can't mix either of these funds with the general fund either. So each of these, the sewer and the storm, have to stand on their own as a separate business. And we can also issue debt on these funds with council approval. Most recently, $50 million for the sewer fund in December 2022. So is there any questions about that, that sort of high-level scope of services? I'm going to hand it over to Chris Gray, and she's going to talk through what I hope is a lively discussion on policy, help give us some direction. And I'm going to be back there taking notes, and I'll be available for questions if you have any.
Thank you. Councilmember Frey.
Well, first question for you. So we just wrapped up a sustainability workshop upstairs before this, and one of the topics was talking about water sustainability. And recognizing that this is an enterprise fund, how do we de-conflict those two priorities? In the sense that we want to be sustainable in our water use, but also we make money when people use water? So how are we working on that?
Sure. So I was able to attend that workshop by Zoom, even though I wasn't in the room with you. I appreciated hearing that update on the sustainability plan. So what we're talking about is a struggle I think that every water utility has to work through. And it's true, not only when we're talking about water conservation, but frankly, related to weather. but frankly related to weather and climate variability. So in a wet year, like the last couple of years have been more wet, we get less revenue. But also some of our expenses go down. We've incrementally adjusted over the past few years, you might recall, some of our fixed fees. So what that does is it helps us with revenue stabilization. As we start to see trends in water conservation, we track that very closely every year, our per capita water use. What does increasing development mean for us? We're constantly tweaking to see, are we going to be able to cover our fixed costs? And then make sure that we're set up right with the right ratio of fixed to variable revenue. So, so looking long term, we're also looking at our water supply needs overall. And kind of speaking to the last presentation on land use in the comprehensive plan, Arvada's always, or for many, many years, paid a lot of attention to that water supply, land use synergy. And we would continue to do that too with water conservation in mind. So we have a lot of thoughts on it, happy to dig in. But hopefully that helps answer your initial question.
I'm just glad to hear you guys are talking about that.
Oh yeah, yeah. We, we not only talk about it, we geek out about it. And so you definitely give that a lot of thought. So thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions before I hand it over to Chris? Okay, thank you.
Thanks Sharon. Good evening. Good to be with you tonight to talk about this topic. Like Sharon said, we geek out about this. So this is, this is kind of fun for us. So tonight, we're going to talk about the timeline that we're proposing for the rate and fee setting schedule. Again, we time this usually to go along with a budget adoption, which happens in October. So we'll be coming back to you for the next couple of months to present some more information and respond to your direction and feedback. Again, recapping what we heard from you on April 8th, which feels like forever ago. And then talk about the why and the how of this whole process and then the next steps. But as Sharon mentioned, we are here primarily to, to listen to what you have to say. So we're going to ask you, I'm going to ask you some pointed questions when we get to a discussion point slide. But please tell us what your priorities are and what direction you would like us to go so that we can respond to you in a timely manner. So as Sharon mentioned, she'll be taking notes. I'll listen to this tomorrow so I can take notes as well. But please let us know what you're thinking. So the timeline we're looking at today is July 22nd. And again, I just talked about what we'll talk about tonight. In August, we'll come back to you with some numbers. So we'll talk about the rate and fee ranges that we're proposing based on your direction and also responses to some other questions we'll ask you about assistance programs and bonds and loans. In September, we'll finalize those responses, knowing that you'll probably have some more questions for us and feedback that you'd like to give us. We'll finalize the information and confirm those recommendations. And then we'll come back to you in October for two readings, October 7th and October 21st, at which point we'll have rates in place and then those will become effective January 1st of 25. So some questions and themes that we heard from you back on April 8th. One was a request to research funding to address not only the cost of infrastructure, but also customer bill impacts. And we are in the process of doing that. We've mentioned that we are working with a consulting firm that does this kind of work on a regular basis. They are looking at some options for us for how to fund some of our large capital progress, projects, excuse me. And so we'll come back to you in August with some specific information about what that looks like. Notably, we have a replacement water treatment plant to fund, and that's coming up in the next several years. We're in the middle of piloting some of that work right now. So that's a massive project that's a large dollar item. And so we're looking at the best ways to fund that. That, that both reduce the cost of the infrastructure, which then helps our customers with their bills. Number two is a multi-part question. Do we have the right staff? Do we have enough staff to do all of this work? Not only putting it into place, but maintaining it? How do we manage our assets to stay on top of the aging infrastructure? Every system has its own timeline for aging. And then how do we know what needs to be completed so that we're delivering a level of service that our customers expect? So we do staffing reviews every year during the budget process. Most recently, we came to you in the last few years to ask for water and wastewater engineers to help implement a number of projects that were timely and needed to be implemented soon. So thank you for those resources. You will see some information from us in August, more along the stormwater fund line. That, that fund needs some help. And so we'll be asking for some resources for that. As far as managing our assets to stay on top of what we need, we have a number of things that we do. One of the things we presented to you back in April and we've been presenting over the last couple of years is a level of service document. So this is the document that tells, that we all agree upon, both internally on the team level and then bring to you that says, we are comfortable with and believe that we can meet zero sanitary sewer overflows in a year. X number of water line breaks. We have a water supply that meets a certain number of criteria. And that, we believe, is what not only our customers expect, but demonstrates a resilient system. So we are looking at that all the time. The engineering team is looking at that on an annual basis. And we present that on a pretty regular basis to ourselves and then bring it to you. We also have a long-term asset database. And I talked about this a little bit in April. So we track every asset in our systems that is worth more than $20,000. There are a lot of them. And that team also goes through and prioritizes with the operations staff what they believe needs to be done next. So while we might have a water line that's really old, it might not have a lot of breaks. That one can kind of come down on the list versus a water line that's pretty new, but is having a lot of water breaks. We want to bump that one up on the list. And we will roll that out to you in August as part of our capital plan. So CIP is the acronym for Capital Improvement Plan. And we have a number of projects for each of the funds, water, sewer and stormwater, that we color code by priority. So you'll see a document that's got red, orange and yellow colors all over it. And we will speak to that document and how funding that comes into play. And then again, the level of service. We want to make sure our customers are receiving what they expect. We know that from our recent surveys, our customers are happy with and also expect a high level of and high quality for water, sewer and stormwater services. One of the other questions was around turf reduction and water conservation programs and how they can help our customers with their bills. So we have a partnership contract with Resource Central in Boulder. They are a fabulous organization who works with a lot of the front range cities who aren't staffed to provide conservation programs. They do that for us. We pay them money and they run a lot of programs for us. So right now, we have five programs we're running with them. And all of those programs not only help customers reduce their bills, but also keep a nice looking yard. That's a balance that we always want to strike with our customers. So the five programs are slow the flow irrigation audits. They come out to our residents who are interested in this and look at their irrigation systems, give them some tips and tricks, reset it for them. And that helps our customers, our customers reduce their water bills. A lot of people set their systems and forget it. I saw a lot of that on Saturday morning when I was driving around after that massive storm on Friday night and sprinkler systems were going off everywhere. And it's like, ugh, you don't have to water. You just got a ton of water last night. So we have customers who are very interested in that. In fact, we're going to bump up our contract with Resource Central to provide some more of those opportunities to our customers. We have smart controllers. So again, controllers that can tell when it rained and stop your system from running when it doesn't have to. And we give those to our customers. So we're, we're happy to let our customers have that technology. We offer a number of seminars. And these are not just for Arvada residents. They're held around the front range. And so we have a few hundred Arvada residents who have participated in the last three, and there's one coming up. So we are, we're pretty good at the seminar business. At least they are, and we're good at getting people there. So they range from what are pollinator gardens to how to create a beautiful zero scape garden to how to remove turf. And they listen to what folks want and deliver those themes. We have a lawn replacement program. And so part of the sustainability conversation can be around how to help customers reduce the amount of grass they have in their yard that they don't want or don't like, or don't want to water with something that's prettier. And so Resource Central offers those. And we have about 63 active applicants for that. So we're, we're happy that VCN Vibrant Communities and Neighborhoods has proposed some money and put that towards the 2024 contract. And finally, one of our most popular programs is the Garden in a Box Program. And that is basically a plant by numbers program. You pay an amount of money. Our customers get a discount off of the plant selection. You show up, you get all your plants. They give you a map, you plant it. It looks beautiful. I've done it myself and it's a really nice change to grass. So that is one way that we can help our customers with their bills. You had also asked for us to break down the recommended increases in bills to the fixed volumetric and overall rate increases. And what we've done in the past is told you what the volumetric percentage is and the dollar fixed is, and it's a little bit confusing. So what we're going to do is present that to you as an overall number. And we'll show those to you in August. We have some assistance programs that we offer our customers if they're struggling to pay their bills. And so Low Income Energy Assistance Program customers in the state, we're able to access some federal funds that went towards water assistance bill forgiveness. And that program ended in 2023, but we did have about $124,000 of bill forgiveness last year. So that was a great program. I have not yet seen that that legislation has been renewed, but we're keeping our eyes on it. How do we increase our public education about what we charge rates for? People pay their bills. They'd like to see what they're getting for their money. And so how can we provide success stories from what we've received? We do that in a number of ways. Our communications team does, and we'll show you the Arvada report, talk about what utilities work is going on around town. And so that's one way we do that. We also put notices in our utility bills. We are keeping our social media feeds up to date and just generally letting people know what is out there so that they can feel good that what they're paying is actually going to something. There's a lot of construction going on around town right now. So folks are aware that we are in their streets. But it's also good to give people some information where they can maybe not be in traffic and experiencing it. We have a communication strategy that we implemented this year to help us with what messaging goes to what customers. And that's been very helpful for targeting different groups to let them know this is going on in your neighborhood or you've expressed interest in this in the past. And so that's been a very useful method. And you had all received back in April, the, looking for it here, the insert that talks about beneath the surface, our water, sewer and stormwater systems. It's got a really good diagram on the inside. If you're looking for more of those for any of your folks, let us know. We've got a lot. But that's, that's been a helpful document for us. And then finally, can we offer tours? So that people can see what they're paying for. And yes, we can, and we do. We can schedule tours on demand for the Ralston Plant. We've actually done about one per month for folks ranging from community groups to students to just interested residents. It's a fascinating thing to see if you've been out there, what a, it's almost 60-year-old plant looks like and where your water comes from. So that's been helpful for a lot of customers. So why do we have a rate and fee setting process? As Sharon mentioned, the enterprise funds are different from the general fund. And so we have a conversation with you annually and you make decisions and tell us annually what you'd like for increases to rates and fees to cover a certain set of expenses. So again, we're meeting with you earlier than we had last year. These revenues support all aspects of our city, our residents, our businesses and our visitors. So everything from public health and safety to economic growth, again, that level of service that we talk about with our customers and then system resiliency. It's very important for us to have a system that can perform when normal unexpected things happen. It might sound strange to say normal unexpected, but we are planning for all sorts of outages across our system and then build for that so that we have everything in place when we need it. The two pictures are both of the Ralston Plant. We've shown the top one in the past. Those are steel jacks holding up a flume at the plant. And that's concerning to us because we want to be able to have infrastructure that supports itself, literally and figuratively. But that's, that's an ongoing concern for us. And then the bottom picture is some water that was leaking out of the building from the inside to the outside. So we are working on those, but just, those are two pictures of why we do this process. And then the how. The how is an almost year-long process. So during the annual budget process, we look at all of our expenses. We are going to look at inflation, of course, for the next several years. We look at who's, who's in our workforce. Where are the needs? Where are the backlogs? I mentioned that stormwater needs some attention. So we'll be talking to you about that. We have a CIP plan that we talked about. That's not only a combination of aging infrastructure and capacity, it's master planning. So we just finished up a ton of master planning per your direction. And we will do that on a regular basis. Those aren't once and done. They're every several years, we, we check in on those. We plan several years out. So we have a really good idea of what the next five years looks like. We look at 10 years to have placeholders and refine those costs annually. And so we'll keep that going every budget cycle. We also pass through increases from very large contracts that we have. We pay Metro about $10 million a year to treat our wastewater. We pay Denver Water about $7.5 million a year for our raw water contract. We get 75% of our water from Denver Water. So those are increases that we have no control over. We pass those through to our customers. And then we have internal service funds, like vehicle replacement, computer replacement, general fund transfers, so that we're paying for the, the costs that go to city manager's office, city attorney's office, HR, for all of the work that they do for the enterprise. And then Fund 55 contributions. And Fund 55, you'll hear more about during the budget process, I am guessing. That's more, a more formalized facilities funding structure than we've had in the past. So you'll see more, more information about that. We've been doing workshops since March internally. And then we've had hearings with city manager's office and finance over the course of spring and summer. We just finished our operating hearing last week. So we are full on in budget cycle. And then we come to you and we get your feedback and incorporate that into our recommendations. This is concurrent with the 10-year model work that the finance department does. So you'll know that in the budget book, we offer a 10-year model. We have to balance by the end of those 10 years. And so we work hard on those to make sure that we have the right information. And then again, we ask you to adopt recommendations in October. So here are some discussion points. And I'll ask you some specific questions for feedback so we can take that forward for our August presentation to you. In our 10-year financial models, we have increases built in for 2025 as follows. We have a 10% overall increase for water, a 10% increase for sewer and a 5% increase for stormwater. And in the next bullet point, I'll talk a little bit more about how that's, how that's funded. But our plan is to come back to you in August and say, here's what we can do with those increases. Here's what we cannot do with those increases. We have been doing some work in our financial models and early, early views show that those increases might not fund, probably won't fund everything that needs to be done, all the red, all the orange and all the yellow colored projects. So we'll come back and also tell you what would be needed to do all of that work. So we'll give you some ranges, but also speak specifically to those numbers. One of the things that we have done recently is use bonds to fund our enterprise projects. And so you may recall that in 2022, we issued $100 million, 50 million for water, 50 million for sewer, to help fund some of our very large projects. And we're spending away. We're giving you the, the quarterly updates on the spending trajectory for those projects. But one of the things that we wanted to ask you directly is are you comfortable with us considering bonds and/or loans for future, future budget cycles? So would you be comfortable with bonds or loans in 2025 and out years? Debt and loans, bonds and loans are very helpful for any utility. It was a big thing for a long time to cash fund everything, even for the larger organizations like Denver Water and Metro. And a lot of organizations are moving more towards debt financing so that we can spread out the costs of the projects. So if you think about cash funding, that's great in the fact that you don't have debt. You're not paying interest on something. But at the same time, we have to ask our current customers to pay a lot more to generate that revenue in order to have it in time for the project. The pros for debts and loans, again, yes, you're paying interest, maybe not a pro, but you've got a 30-year time period to pay it off. And one of the, the most important and significant points for debt and loans is that you have generational equity. So your future customers are also paying that debt service because they're benefiting from the asset that was funded from, from that debt. So I'm personally a, a proponent of using debt appropriately in the, the recommendation scenarios. But a question for you would be, what, what is, what is your take on the role of bond and debt?
So I'll, I'll start, and perhaps this is for you, Mr. Archer. Obviously, interest rates are quite high. I know with our bond rating, we are, we'll have quite favorable interest rates. If we were to go to bond, is there ability to refinance in the future if and when interest rates drop?
Mayor, that's a great question. Right now, the answer is no. So the federal government took that away with this most recent administration. So we'll see. As that moves forward, there's a lot of push to bring that back in. Hopefully, for our sake, it will come back in. And the timing of this, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, but we're assuming interest rates will start to come down, maybe later this fall and early in the spring, and so hopefully, the timing would work out quite well.
Okay, thank you. And I'm trying to gather my thoughts as we speak. So generally, I am in favor, and again, I guess this one goes to Mr. Archer as our financial expert. Do we, obviously, we see a sustainable path to being able to pay off the bonds for the work performed over the 30 years?
Yes, these would be tied directly to rates, and we feel very comfortable with that moving forward.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll open it up to the remainder of council for thoughts, questions. Councilmember Davis, then Mayor Pro Tim Mormon, Councilmember Ambrose. Just so I know, do you also have a question or a thought?
Yes, please put me on stack, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You go after Mayor Pro Tim Mormon. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this, Ms. Gray, Ms. Israel. So as I looked back in my logbook here, you, I ticked off, you answered all the questions I had on April 8th, so thank you for that. I have attended a tour with another community group, and I would encourage all of council to take a tour of the water treatment plants. We are doing very well with what we have to work with. That is due to staff. We have some amazing staff out there that are putting things together to provide safe drinking water and, and to make sure that, that it's there when you turn your tap on. So kudos to all those folks out there, and thank you so much for that tour. Having worked in water, wastewater, and electric power generation, bonds and, and debts are the way to go, and Arvada is well-positioned to pay those back. So I, given the age of some of the infrastructure around the city and the needs that we see as we grow and build on to the cities, some of those larger apartment complexes, we definitely need to do the taking lasting care of our infrastructure. Being an infrastructure wonk, I think the stuff that nobody sees is really important. And again, I wish I had X-ray vision so I could help you find the leaks and the springs. But I, I am in, I, I think it's a pro. I do not think it's a con, so I support it. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for this presentation. Back to question one, I'm, I apologize, I don't remember what was last year's percentage increases. Are they the same as what were being proposed here? Are they more? What's the difference there?
They are, they were more. So water was 14.5% overall, and sewer was 13.7%.
Okay, thank you for that context. So I, I echo the comments of, of Councilmember Davis and the mayor, I believe, on, on the bonds and loans. I, I trust our financial experts in the room, really, on that and forecasting, you know, are we able to pay them off, and is it a, a good, sound decision? And it sounds like it is to me, so I, I would be supportive of that based on, on those recommendations. And then I, I don't think you asked question three, but I, I will jump to that and, and request that I would like to see more options for utility bill assistance programs, and then looking at the, you know, the, the bit of data you provided here, and of course, I always ask, well, how accessible is it to our residents? How aware are they of this, and how did they access that, access that assistance? So I, I always go back to just, you know, information is power, and do people have the information they need to know that they can get that assistance, and how easily can they access it? So I, I encourage us to keep looking at ways to improve that system to provide those, those options for folks.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to be clear on bullet point two, so we have $100 million in the various water enterprise funds in debt. And then it looks like with the following three points, you are anticipating recommending issuing another $155 million worth of debt?
Yes, that's the, that's what's in the budget book currently.
So, so it'll be $255 million debt through 2026?
If we follow this plan, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, like, double counting or something with it. And prior to 2022, had we issued debt with the, any of the waters, sewer, or stormwater enterprise funds before?
We have. We have not issued any debt for the stormwater fund. For water, we've issued debt since 1961 through 2001, and then we took a 20-year break. For the water fund, the total in 2022 dollars was about $450 million. And then for the sewer fund, we've issued debt since 1959 a handful of times. The last issue was in 1968, and then there was a mill levy in 1961. The total in 2022 dollars for the sewer fund is only $15 million. So we have issued debt in the past.
Okay, and, and like, I heard you say that the advantage to issuing debt is that the rate increases would not be as expensive to current users, correct?
Debt and loans have the ability to bring rate increases and fee increases down somewhat. It is not a very drastic reduction, but it does make a difference.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm not sure if this is for you or for Mr. Archer, but, you know, with the ability to be able to repay this, I know you're taking into account things that we can't, we don't have control over the cost. So, because some of the things you were talking about, like the vendors we work with, if they raise costs, we have to pass that on to customers. So you're anticipating that scenario where we would need to raise costs because we're paying debts, and we would need to raise costs because the vendors we're working with would raise costs on us?
We take that into consideration in our financial modeling. So we look out 10 years. We're not just doing one year. We're doing, doing a 10-year forecast. So not only do we have realistic inflators built in for our contractors, our vendors, you know, we have 10% built in next year for Metro because we know that they're already looking at that. The default for Metro is about 5%. So it's not, it's not zero, it's something. We're taking those into consideration, and then what we're also doing is making sure that the rate and fee increases that we are looking at for out-years have the ability to pay that debt service for us.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to ask these questions to establish that, you know, debt is typical for utilities and enterprise funds, so it sounds like it is. And then also just that, I mean, we're doing 10-year projections, but I don't know if the vendors we're working with are, and if they're sharing that modeling with us. But it sounds like we're doing the best to get that information and incorporate it into the plans.
We, we are politely pushy, asking our partners about, so what can you tell us about your infrastructure? How can you, what are rates looking like next year? And to their credit, they are telling us as much as they can, when they can. They can't tell us something that their boards or counselors haven't heard yet, but they can give us a, a range, and then we take that high end of the range and plug that in as our default.
Um, thank you.
Yes.
Can I, can I add something?
Sure.
Councilmember Ambrose, the other thing from a city perspective is we're a very good customer to loan money to because we have a very diverse revenue base. And so we're not reliant on just one source. So many cities might have a very large manufacturing base or maybe a customer that uses 50% of their water. We don't have any customers that get anywhere close to that. And so in times, maybe we have a drought, or we have something that happens that changes the way that our customers use water, it's not going to affect us like it would other communities. And so we build that in to our 10-year plan as well.
No, thank you. That's a, that's a great point. That's all the questions I have for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Faray.
Thank you. So how much would this extra cost for our users in Arvada over how much it would save on, let's say, infrastructure that we, we have deemed critical? So I know you had that chart that you talked about, this is essential that we need to fix. It's going to be broken in 10 years. So if we take that amount, how much would that cost the taxpayer dollars versus how much extra interest would we have on this debt and loan? Is that making sense?
It makes sense. I can't tell you off the top of my head, but we can come back to you with that information.
Because I think that's just, it's a simple numbers. If we can't repair the critical things within that 10-year range, and that would cost more than the $100 million plus that 5% to 7% interest, then it seems like an easy financial decision with that. That being said, I wonder how much we can offset in terms of increasing the cost of tier two and three for our users. And I echo some of your perspectives in the community when you drive by and see just aggressive waste of water. And so understanding that water's essential, that tier one, where it's most affordable, we don't touch, but really kind of hammering down on that tier two, tier three, how much money we could offset of that loan?
That is also something we can research. I, I will say that if we are looking at changing the tiered structure at all, that is something that's going to take us a little bit longer to do than one month. That is more of a holistic review of how our customers use water and where it makes the most sense to do that. So I would say that would be very difficult for us to come back in August and do. If it's the direction of council, we can certainly take a look at that more holistically for 2026, and we can do that next year. It'd be really hard to pull off.
That's fair. I think, I think it's important that we don't make water unaffordable at that basic level, but I also see a lot of waste and a, a lot of room for improvement in terms of water conservation, that we could leverage some of that tier two and tier three costs to offset some of the $100 million, because in the end, that would save money to the consumer in general, if we can offset some of that debt and loan, if that makes sense. So yeah, just that one question of how much would it cost if all of the critical things in that 10-year range were to essentially fail versus the $100 million plus that 5% to 7%? And just seeing what that differential is would be, I think, important. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And then a, just one quick follow-up question from me. So 30-year debt, we pay it off. What is the average lifespan? I understand different pieces will last longer than others, but what would be the average lifespan of most of this infrastructure?
Between 20 and 30 years. Our, our last debt issue was a 30-year term because we could justify that it was a 30-year lifespan. It is likely the same for the upcoming projects that we're recommending. For sure, a water treatment plant is going to have.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, is, is how long does the infrastructure? So does a water treatment plant last 60 years, double the?
Gotcha.
Yeah, not the load. The load's 30.
Yep, nope, but also, it's going to depend. If water lines are included, it's going to be 20 to 50 years. A water plant, 50 to 75 years. So it's longer than the, the debt term.
Perfect, thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, I, I think I am also comfortable moving forward with that discussion as well as for 2026, exploring Councilmember Faray's ideas.
Okay. And, and to clarify something that, and reiterate something that Mr. Archer said, our customers repay this, these debts or loans with our rates and fees. So that is something that we pass on to them to pay back for that loan. I'm including the word loan because while we issued revenue bonds in 2022, we have the ability to borrow money from the state and from the federal government. So we're going to take a look at all of the options for going forward.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gray.
Then the last question is, should we return to you with options for more utility bill assistance programs? I heard yes. We currently offer hardship credits. We do payment arrangements. And as I mentioned earlier, the, the LIWAP program ended. We have been doing some research about our neighbors and what they offer, and there's a whole spectrum of offerings from in-house programs to references to nonprofits. So the question is, should we come back with more options?
Councilmember Faray.
Yes, the hardship credits were not advertised publicly for these past few years, and I think that might be why we see that it's so low. It wasn't easily accessed information online. So I'd be curious if we continue to fund the hardship credits with it now being publicly available, as our council member said, "Education is king"? What was it?
Queen.
Some fancy saying. But I, I think that would be helpful just to see the data when it's more readily available.
Okay, I think we're all yes. Okay, that sounds good. We will come back with some, some perspective about what the, the region offers, and then some recommendations from, from the city team. Those are the end of the slides. So if you have other direction for us, feedback, questions, happy to take that.
No. Please, Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, one thing I would like to see is how the Climate Action Plan kind of interacts with this infrastructure plans and costs because, and I think a lot of this might come from the funding portion research, which you said you're going to bring back. But I think things like critical infrastructure investments, like the Inflation Reduction Act, a large portion of it was critical infrastructure updates. And if there is also, like, an equity lens to it, like parts of town that have sewer backups more than other parts of town, and things like that, is that information available? Is that going to be presented? So I think those are two separate questions I have, just generally about water and infrastructure.
We can certainly pull together the intersection of the Climate Action Plan. I will, with what we're working on, I will say that we do have some maps that we'll present to you in August that show a combination of information. They're going to be maps showing what projects we have and where they are in the city, based on their color coding, red, orange, and yellow. We're also going to show you a map that displays median household income as well as some environmental justice information. So the intersection of, of income in the city along with some parts of the city that might be struggling from an environmental justice perspective. So that can, that will come into the assistance program section of our August presentation. So that might answer some of your questions, but please let us know if that doesn't.
Great. Yeah, it's my hope that the federal funding will help us be more client resilient and also provide some environmental justice, especially when it comes to different water issues. So I'm hopeful for that presentation. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Do we have any heat maps that show where the most frequent burp-ups are in, in the process? Like the most frequent flooding from overwhelmed stormwater, or stormwater systems, frequent drinking water breaks, and then maybe wastewater burp-ups?
I believe we have the data. We don't perhaps have it in a map form yet, but we can work on that. A picture is worth a thousand words, so that's helpful to see.
All right. I see no other lights. Thank you very much, Ms. Gray and Ms. Israel, for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work on this. All right, that concludes our workshops for this evening. Ms. Gillis, do you have any updates?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Mr. Jax? Oh, Mr. Maloney. Oh, my gosh. I know you're Brad. I know.
It's quite the compliment, especially at this hour, so I'm good.
Thank you, Brad.
Uh, no updates for me. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Then before I, I let us out for the evening, I just want to take a quick note to honor Ms. Lori Gillis, who is our city manager. This is her last meeting with us today. And Ms. Lori, I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank you for all of your service to the city of Arvada for the past 10 years, for your dedication and your integrity to this city. It has not gone unnoticed. And I have just personally learned a very great deal from you. So just thank you from me to you for everything you've done for Arvada.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been an honor to serve the residents and the community. It has been a privilege to lead such a qualified city team. And the messages that I've received from both the city team and the community have been a bit overwhelming. Thank you.
Randy.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to add to what the mayor said, Lori, that I, I really appreciate your leadership, that you have provided a number of priorities for, for us. And two of my priorities that you really stepped up and made sure that we got through, and that was recycling and, and our homelessness, and making sure the right people were working on those and, and really delivering. And so I really appreciate all that you've done on those. Thank you.
Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Lori. It's been an honor to work with you. Thank you for allowing me to be aflame and flare up, but then pulling me back when you need to to get that energy under control. I do appreciate that. I have, it's just been delightful. I know that it's been fun. I've been working with you over 10 years for, on other various projects that the city has had in committees and commissions, and I appreciate your leadership and all that you have done for the city. We are very appreciative. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. We wish you nothing but the greatest in all of your next adventures. We wish you nothing but the greatest in all of your next adventures. All right, thank you. With that, we are adjourned.
Oh. Councilmember Ambrose.
Sorry, I just also wanted to thank city manager Gillis. I have not been able to work with you very long, but I really do appreciate the way you have been able to get things done and the things you've taught me, and really value your service to the city, and you'll be missed, so thank you.
All right. Councilmember Frey.
It's a thankless job, and I think a heartfelt thank you from all of us is, is not enough, but we do appreciate everything that you've done, and you've done it with dignity and grace, so thank you for that.
Indeed. With that, we are adjourned.